Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 1st, 2014, Waukegan City Council meeting. Please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Bishop Colburn?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for, you said in the script, you pray for those that are in authority. We pray for our mayor, we pray for our aldermen, pray for every department head, we pray for all of our citizens, that we'll all be one, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Mayor's comments, I'd like to recognize someone who is very proficient at what he does, someone who's very respectful, someone who reports the news as it actually is. I'd like to present a resolution to, from the City of Waukegan, does hereby present Dan Moran, the Certificate of Achievement for being recognized as the Illinois Top Journalist by the Illinois Association of Park Districts, presented to him at the city council meeting on December 1st, 2014. Mr. Moran, would you please come forward?
Picture.
Oh, picture? Put it in the newspaper. Yeah, front page.
Front page.
This man is very humble, but I can tell you this. Bill Valco, in her previous three years, we were to have case reports, we had to report an officer, and the next day we looked in the newspaper and knocked the question out of the reporter. But Dan, something happened then. He reported the editor, as truthful as he can be, the honest interpretation of what actually happened. And certainly, we all have our differences and different points of view, but Dan, I respect your message, and I am very grateful that you are the one who reports the news in our community. Thank you very much.
I'd like to report that Alderman Valco and I had a terrible time in Mexico. It was just terrible for ten days. What do you think, Bill?
Yes, sir.
But, um, next is audience time. Jane Ferry. Jane, please step up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jane Ferry, Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street, and tonight with me is one of my board members, Megan McKenna Demahia. We are here to talk a little bit about what happened last Saturday, which was Small Business Saturday. If you were able to come downtown and go into the shops and the galleries, you saw how much fun it was, you got some good deals, and you have probably some unique gifts to give to people. Please remember that those businesses and shops are open year-round, and they need your support. Remember that sixty-eight cents out of every dollar spent locally stays locally, so keep that in mind. Coming up this Saturday is Holiday Walk. It's a family fun event for everybody who would like to bring their kids, grandkids, themselves, enjoying doing some crafts, doing a little bit of pictures with Santa, including with your pets. Wags is doing a fundraiser for the animal shelter here in Waukegan. It kicks off with breakfast with Santa at Greentown Tavern, and it ends with the mayor flipping the light on the official tree in Jack Benny Plaza. All three theaters are also busy this weekend. We have, at the Genesee Theater on Friday, True TV and Practical Jokers. On Saturday, we have Felix Cavallari's Rockin' the Holidays. Excuse me. And then next Saturday, they also have The Nutcracker and Michael McDonald's. So there's a lot of holiday shows going on. There are two family-friendly plays going on at the smaller theaters in downtown. Santa Claus Conquers the Martians at Three Brothers Theater has been sold out every single night, so get your tickets early. Clockwise has Captain Superlative, also doing very well ticket sales-wise, so once again, get your tickets early. And keep in mind that the Genesee is adding shows all the time. Clockwise already has their schedule for 2014, 2015 out. Three Brothers is just polishing theirs up, and I'm sure they're gonna post it soon. Please support these local theaters, and remember, Waukegan is unique for having three active theaters in its downtown district. Keep them alive by buying the tickets. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Jane. Next item on the agenda is motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting, minutes of November 17th, 2014. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moiseo. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, resolutions, proclamations, presentations, appointments are or none. Community reports, Judiciary Committee, Alderman Rivera, please.
Judiciary Committee came to order at approximately 5:00 PM. First item on the agenda, item A, approving zoning calendar L-1-14.
Aye.
Petitioner Christopher Lanning and David Allen, located at 946 North Sheridan Road.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item B, approve AMSK and Associates property proposed agreement and resolution located This is the, I believe it's in Alderman May's, is this in your ward? at 801 Market Street.
Alderman Tempest.
All of us received the letter, the 2014, it's on our agenda this evening, for consideration Alderman Tempest's ward. This is to, uh, the Isaac, it's called the Isaac Arline Home, which is a highly significant and agreement, and also resolution regarding the AMSK and Associates property at 801 South structure that is a contributing landmark in Waukegan's near-north historic district Market Street. This is the property that has been the subject of much discussion and ongoing efforts to on the National Register of Historic Places. obtain completion of environmental remediation for many years. And this building is a beautiful building. Completion of the remediation has been guaranteed since 2004 by a letter of credit in favor Its cultural characteristics of early Waukegan identifies, you know, with a person who significantly contributed development of the community and is representative of the distinguishing characteristic of the city issued by the Lake Forest Bank and Trust Company. The letter of credit has been reduced over the years and also extended every year. of an architectural style. At present, the expiration date on the letter of credit is December 16th, 2014. So the, uh, the Historical Preservation Society approved this, and it is a beautiful building. The existing amount for the letter of credit is some $394,000. And the motion is to approve the zoning calendar L-14, petitioner Christopher Lanning and Our consultant, John Antoranian, has been working with the owners of the subject property to negotiate an agreement whereby the owners will deed the property to the city as well David Allen, located at 946 North Sheridan Road, an iso move. as give the city funds towards the final cost of remediation.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
In addition, John is working to obtain grants for the remainder of the funds necessary
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
to finish the remediation work. Included in our packets for this item is an agreement to this effect. Because of the tight timing imposed by the expiration date of the letter of credit, we need to approach the matter on two parallel tracks. Therefore, also included in your packet is the resolution calling the letter of credit, and we asked, they've asked us, Judiciary Committee, which we passed on to the council, approve both the proposed agreement and the resolution so that in the event that the property owners are unable or unwilling to fulfill all the requirements of the agreement, the city can immediately proceed to access the available funds in the letter of credit. I do have John, or John or Ann, if you want to come up, if any of the aldermen have any questions. If not, the motion will be...
Are there any questions by the aldermen, first of all?
No.
Alderman Beedley? Ann, would you step up, please?
Is the city amped to contribute anything for this?
$200,000 is being contributed by AMSK, which will go to offset the city's costs, so at the end of the, at the end of the day, no.
Not one dime.
No, we'll get it all back. None, no money.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I don't know if I have questions, but I do have some, some thoughts on this. Ann, I guess the first question I would ask, remediation on this property, I thought that we had already secured through the County of Lake, brownfield development monies that was assigned to the city of Waukegan to help remediate that property.
Maybe John Antoranian actually would be better than me to answer that question, 'cause I'm not aware of that. The total cost of remediation, starting back ten years ago in 2004, was $1.2 million. Work has been done to clean up the property over the last ten years. It's just not finished, and so where we are now is to finalize the final work that needs to be done, which is a removal of a debris pile that's, that's sitting there. But as far as other funds, maybe you can...
I believe the funds you were speaking of, Alderman, are funds that were allocated many years ago.
Four years ago.
Four years ago by the county.
Yes.
That, for whatever reasons, and I don't, I'm not having been here, cannot answer the question specific, but it was never transferred to the property or the development in the county, I believe, then reused the money in a different location. But again, that's limited knowledge on my part as to what actually happened, but the city did not use those funds on that site, and that was something that happened four years ago, I believe, as far as I understand. So we're basically working off of what we have today as to the timing.
And I do appreciate that, I appreciate the work and the knowledge that you're bringing to this particular project. I guess a level of frustration to this alderman, two of them. One, Your Honor, I understand that you're looking to move forward on a lot of projects, but not to involve an alderman in such a project such as this, in negotiations and ongoing conversations with this particular said property, I guess I don't understand. I think as an alderman of that area, or any alderman, as we did with the River Road, as we did with, with other major projects at the city of Waukegan, that alderman was briefed. My level of frustration with this primarily comes in, we had the opportunity to clean this up several years ago. I did not know, and I'm openly saying this now, that if this property did not get cleaned, it would have been the city's responsibility to clean it up. Now, Your Honor, I know you walked into this, and I apologize, but we had an opportunity to move forward on this particular property years ago. It was brought to us that this wasn't the right time, the money should be allocated to other places, recommendation that staff told us that we should go this, we should move forward on, on this said property with that brownfield money. That's my level of frustration with it. After speaking with the chairman of Judiciary Committee, him explaining to me steps A, B, and C, and all the time that our new consultant has put into this, I was ready to vote no one. But thank you, Alderman Rivera. You know, it just seems sometimes to me, Your Honor, that there's a little, it's not enough respect goes to the alderman and the time and the energy that we put in, and the question that we have to render when these, these projects hit the paper, because sometimes they can't reach you or your staff, but they can reach us. I'd just like to be ahead of it to give a good, honest answer, to the best of my ability. That's all I ask for. And on top of, we had the opportunity to do this a while back. Thank you for moving forward on this, but I'm disappointed with some staff members who didn't bring this to our attention in the past. I want you to, I'm very disappointed in them, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor.
But thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Ann.
And sir, I apologize if I offended you. It was certainly not our intent.
You did, Your Honor.
I can assure you that we've worked on this project for over a year. Every glitch that, that was, came before us, we resolved. This was the best deal we could accomplish. During this period of time, we acquired 11 acres of that land at no cost to the city. We took, they're gonna put a $200,000, they're gonna give us $200,000 toward remediation of this site. At the end of the day, the city will be on, will be, have no debt on this property. If we do decide, if they want this property back, they have an option to buy this property back for what it cost us, our expenses. So our security now is not with the bank, our security now is what, we actually are gonna own the property. And I'm sure we can do this for, do this for the amount of money that we have collected. Thank you.
As the mayor said, this is the best-case scenario to resolve this and get this property moving. So again, item B, and that is to approve AMSK and Associates property proposed agreement and resolution located at 801 Market Street, an iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item C, approve a six-month extension moratorium, moratorium on development on the River Road corridor, an iso move. And in this case here, the developer is asking for a consideration of an ordinance extending the current moratorium on development on the River Road corridor, which was a one-year moratorium that expires on December 16th, 2014, for another six-month period. This time for only a six-month period. You will recall that at the time, the conditional use permit was granted for the River Glen subdivision. Part of the agreement, which was incorporated into the CUP, was that the River Glen developers would donate $500 per lot to the city for a total of $32,500 to fund a planning process for a possible update to the city's comprehensive plan for, for this area. The final plat for the River Glen subdivision has not yet been submitted, and the developer has now requested an extension for filing. The extension request will go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council on December 11th, 2014, and December 15th, 2014, respectfully. As part of the consideration of that request, staff will request that the developer shouldn't make the $32,500 donation immediately so the planning process can begin. For this reason, the moratorium needs to be extended, as staff recommends only a six-month recommendation, an iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item C, approve a six-month extension moratorium, moratorium on development on the River Road corridor, an iso move. And in this case here, the developer is asking for a consideration of an ordinance extending the current moratorium on development on the River Road corridor, which was a one-year moratorium that expires on December 16th, 2014, for another six-month period. This time for only a six-month period. You will recall that at the time, the conditional use permit was granted for the River Glen subdivision. Part of the agreement, which was incorporated into the CUP, was that the River Glen developers would donate $500 per lot to the city for a total of $32,500 to fund a planning process for a possible update to the city's comprehensive plan for, for this area. The final plat for the River Glen subdivision has not yet been submitted, and the developer has now requested an extension for filing. The extension request will go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council on December 11th, 2014, and December 15th, 2014, respectfully. As part of the consideration of that request, staff will request that the developer shouldn't make the $32,500 donation immediately so the planning process can begin. For this reason, the moratorium needs to be extended, as staff recommends only a six-month recommendation, an iso move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item D, amend the Chapter III article, Illinois License, Section 3-40, by modifying a sub-paragraph, "A, 2.5 licensee may not offer to sell hard alcohol in containers smaller than 200 millimeters, nor may licensee offer to sell in individual cans or bottles of beer smaller than, than 3.25." This is gonna allow, I'm sorry, 325. I do have, George, why don't you come on up and, and explain the differences between the B1 licenses and, and the current, the license that they want to be allowed to sell, you know, half-pints.
Sure. Presently, there's 11 license holder, which are mini-mark license. They have restriction on their liquor license. There's four restrictions. One restriction is 20% of the gross sales, not more than 20, could be liquor. That's restriction number one. Number two, the, the display has to be 10, 10 square feet, I'm sorry, 10% of the total square feet. The hard liquor display has to be behind the counter. That restriction stays. The last restriction is, as it stands now, milliliters of hard liquor cannot be less than 375. We're recommending to change to 200 milliliters, which allow them to sell half-pints only, not the airport glasses they have or their, or their containers, just strictly half-pints. That's what they're requesting.
Very well. And I did speak to George on this, as, as far as the, the enforcement of, of these licenses, that liquor license. You know, I believe that we need, you know, I believe George needs somebody out there to really inspect these, these businesses, because there's a lot of licensee holders that aren't really playing by the rules. So they need, we need additional enforcement in there, because they've been selling airplane and half-pints for, for the longest time. So, you know, we need people to go out there and check too, as well. But I've also spoken to some, a couple of the business people that do have liquor licenses, and particularly the one on 10th Street, and to be honest with you, hey, why not allow them to sell half-pints, because across the street is North Chicago, we might as well, you know, improve our sales tax, you know, by, you know, taking some of their customers. So iso move on that. Thank you, George.
Motion by Alderman...
Any other questions?
Question, Your Honor.
Conken.
George, just a quick, you know, you said that their sales have to be less than or equal to 20%. What happens if they're not, and how do you monitor that?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, enforcement. As it stands right now, they give us a report of their, of sales, and they report they're less than 20%. That should cover science with the state report also, but we don't enforce that.
Well, what's the penalty if it is greater? Is there, is our liquor license removed, or are you...
If that happens, if I'm aware of it, I'll take it to the liquor commissioner, and they have suspension or a fine, revoked.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Alderman Beedley?
We have at least one individual that I know of, and perhaps more, that are chronic abusers of our paramedic service. They, they, I don't know if they drink beer or they drink liquor, but they, they, over and by, pass out on the sidewalk. And some of these people, it's, it's almost a daily occurrence. They have no insurance. Usually, they have to go to an emergency room, so everybody else pays for that. And I'm wondering, the people that we can identify that do that, can we put their pictures in these places so they can get served? Now, I went over to Club 18 a few months ago and asked them there, I didn't have a picture of the guy, but they seemed to know who I was talking about, and he insisted he doesn't sell him anything. But this is a huge expense, and these people just abuse city service, they abuse the taxpayers of this community. And I, legally, can we, I'm sure the police department or somebody has pictures of these folks, can we poke them in these, I would, stores and bars, so they can be denied service?
I don't know that.
No, you can't.
I will not know.
Have you reviewed service to anyone? That's...
They do.
That's what I'm saying.
Alderman May?
So I just want to be clear. So 200 milliliters would allow half-pints?
Correct.
And 325 milliliters would allow a single 12-ounce can of beer?
They would not allow.
325 milliliters is 11 ounces.
Yes. It's gotta be more than that, right?
Offer to sell interval, smaller than 325, smaller than 11 ounces, so greater than 11 ounces is 12 ounces. So it does allow a single-can beer.
They cannot break it out of a six-pack. What they, whatever distributor supplies them, they could sell that.
My point is that this change will allow us to sell, will allow these license holders to sell a 12-ounce can of beer.
Yes. We didn't change anything with the beer that exists...
Yeah, 'cause it used to be 375, correct? And now it's 325?
For the beer.
Is it 325 on my...
Me too. Maybe it's a typo.
325 is 11 ounces.
Okay. Maybe it's a typo. 375.
Alderman, we didn't change anything in yours except what we're presenting today.
Well, I'm...
Says 325.
When I compared it to the ordinance online...
Should be 375.
It says 375 on the ordinance, and it says 325 on my agenda.
That did not change. It might have been a typo.
Then it needs to be reread into the record.
We're gonna make sure, Alderman.
Okay, yes.
We're gonna make sure that we have the right number.
Well, I don't want to vote on it until I, well, either way. I know what my vote is.
Hold on, Alderman. We're gonna let Corporation Council take a look at it. If, if that is correct, if it was an error, we'll change that. We can amend that to the number you want. That's not a condition.
I didn't ask you that question, so we know we're voting on it.
Alderman, that...
Your smallest 325 is 11 ounces.
Alderman, when the ordinance was written, we didn't change anything other than reduce the milliliters for half, if you go to pint to half-pint. The rest of the ordinance is just by description only, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me. If there is a typo on the, on the agenda, I can assure you that I will be, not be the one... It's 375. It's, I have the ordinance right here, says 375.
Okay, so it's wrong on the agenda.
It's wrong on the agenda. It's 300, it's 375. We did not change that at all.
You want to make a motion to amend it to 375? First by Alderman May, second by Alderman Rivera, to amend that to 375 milliliters. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Alderman Rivera, it'll be as amended.
As amended, correct.
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Moiseo.
Mr. Torres, this is just for the 10 mini-marts, correct? That is correct. Okay. There's 11 of them, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, 11.
It's allowed them to sell half-pints.
All right, Mayor, then I'll read it as amended.
Can I finish my question?
Alderman Beedley?
What, what, I, I think I was kinda talking about the type of people that tend by half-pints, when they do it, they hang out in alleys, and this is a problem. Problem in the fourth ward. I've had to call the police a number of times, people, whatever they, maybe they don't work, I don't know, but they seem to be able to hang out in alleys to pay a drink, and it's a big problem. Some of them are able to walk away, sometimes the police officers bring them to the police station and book them, and they fill themselves out. Some people that pass out, dedicate on themselves, and emergency squad has to come out, take them to the emergency room, and that's, like I said, there's a big cost of that. And I, I think it's municipality, we need to legally address something like that. I don't know if the city attorney can weigh in, the Corporation Council, but I, I think some of these folks need to be denied service, and that's like they're not being denied.
Posting signs and pictures of people like you suggest, and I understand your concerns, would be a violation of at least three federal statutes or codes that I know. However, that can be self, we can self-impose our thoughts relative to what you're requesting.
However, that can be self, we can self-impose our thoughts relative to what you're requesting in that if a facility that holds a liquor license with the City of Waukegan continues to serve alcohol to the extent that a person requires a paramedic to take them away from the premises or in front of the premises and deliver them to an ER, then at that point in time, an investigation, I think, would reveal that they are in violation of the license and also in violation of the other state statute relative to same. And I think at that point in time that we could enforce, other than picking a particular individual, but simply by custom.
I should have been a little, I didn't mean to post the pictures that would face people at the counter. It would face the other way so the employee could see and, okay, sorry, no, you can't purchase it. That's what I was...
I'll be honest with you.
I still have the same answer.
You know, Alderman, I myself, I worked, you know, twenty years at a liquor store. And believe me, you know, we're trained to, you know, not serve to people that come in, you know, intoxicated, there's no question about that. You know, nowadays, liquor stores, they all have their cameras. You know, they're, you know, they're prepared for some of these things. And, and believe me, that license is very important to these, to these owners. So, you know, there, there's, you know, there's laws, and, and believe me, they, most of these liquor store owners, they respect this. So, I mean, I, I never served anybody underage nor intoxicated. So we look, we look for that, no question about it.
Mr. Torres, also, isn't there a requirement of the, have the liquor license for the dram, is it dram shop? Dram shop. Can you kind of explain that so everyone understands?
General liability insurance, they have insurance on their, on their, on their business, yes.
And then there's a training that must be, that is required by us that you go through, I think, the College of Lake County?
Basic training.
Yeah, basic training that identifies how to look for false IDs, how to make sure a person is not intoxicated. And if I'm not mistaken, there are signs on most of our establishments, or at least when I go to some of the establishments, that we reserve the right to serve. And that is part of their right, is making sure that he or she is not, doesn't already come to the, you know, to the business intoxicated or drunk or high on, whatever. I mean, those are things as part of the training that goes, that we require in order, before you can get your your license from us as a whole. Is that correct? Thank you, sir.
So if there's nothing else, then as amended, like you said, Mayor, our Chapter Three Article Two License, Section Three dash forty, by modifying subparagraph parentheses, "A, parentheses, two-point-five licensee may not offer to sell hard alcohol in containers smaller than two-hundred millimeters, nor may licensee offer to sell individual cans or bottles of beer smaller than three-seventy-five milliliters," and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Pass.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
No.
Alderman Tempest?
No.
It, time. I vote aye. Passes.
Item E. Improve an inducement resolution with Harlem Irving Companies Incorporated relative to certain property at Fountain Square. This resolution is being adopted by the city for the purpose of establishing compliance with the requirements of Section one-point-one-fourty-two dash four and Section one-point-one-fifty dash two of the Treasury Regulations. In that regard, the city hereby declares its official intent to use tax increment financing to reimburse the eligible development and redevelopment project costs not to exceed a reasonable amount of increment produced as it applies to PIN number zero-seven dash twenty-five dash three-eleven dash zero-zero-four and zero-seven dash twenty-five dash three-eleven dash zero-zero-seven under the Act. If the project area qualifies under the Act, notwithstanding the foregoing, this resolution does not qualify, excuse me, does not bind the city to make any expenditure or incur any indebtedness without further action of the City Council. Under no circumstances shall the city be obligated to pay any monies as a general obligation. And this is, of course, in the Ninth Ward. And I believe it's involving, what, about, what, about ten acres? And, Your Honor, we do have Harlem and Irving up here. If there's any other questions?
Are there any questions by the Alderman?
If not, I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Beedling? We, they really can't, they can't announce that.
I can say this, it will be comprised of junior anchor, more fashion-oriented stores.
Continue, Maria.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
And I'd like to compliment Harlem Irving. You did a wonderful job. Johnny Antrenium, you did a wonderful job.
Yes.
The staff of the City of Waukegan did an excellent job on this. This is a twenty-two million dollar project. And it's pay-as-you-go. So the city holds no obligation, which is wonderful. We need more, more business like yours. Thank you very much.
I also want to compliment the, the staff, too.
Yes, the staff did a wonderful job.
In getting everything together.
Absolutely.
This is another great project for the City of Waukegan. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Item F. Approve a motion authorizing the proper city officials to enter a memorandum of understanding between Lake County Health Department slash Community Health Center and Waukegan Public Works to allow the Waukegan Public Works facility to be utilized as a depository for certain medications and medical supplies in the event of a catastrophic biological incident. And, Mayor, I want to compliment you on that. I remember bringing this up maybe about three meetings ago in regards to, you know, situations like Ebola. You never know what can happen. And this is not only going to be in the City of Waukegan, but also there'll be other areas throughout the county. Not only throughout the county, the country, you know, in case of an emergency. You know, there's, there's a plan. There's no question about it. But, but this is what this memorandum of understanding is about. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome? Alderman Tempest?
Aye. That's, that is all, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Rivera. Public Safety Committee, Alderman Conken?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Public Safety met tonight at six P.M. We had three items of discussion. Item A, to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Naval Criminal Investigative Service and participating federal, state, county, and municipal agencies for an information-sharing initiative known as the Law Enforcement Information Exchange, LINX. I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item B, waive the bid procedure and accept the lowest of three quotes for the purchase of emergency equipment for three squad cars from S.A.E. Customs Incorporated for an amount of twenty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Payment for this purchase will be made from the Shawna DUI Fund, number two-nine-two-six-two-nine-two-two-six-four-nine-three, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling? Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item C. Waive the bid procedure and purchase two thousand and fifteen Ford Explorer four-by-four SUV from Wright Automotive under the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Contract Number four-zero-one-seven-three-three-six in the amount of twenty-six thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Payment for this purchase will be made through the Federal Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund, number two-nine-six-six-two-nine-six-two-six-four-nine-three, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
That's all we had tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Conken. Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham?
The Insurance Committee met roughly at six-thirty today. Items A. Authorize proper city officials to extend the contract at the current rates with MetLife for dental and life insurance coverage from June one, two thousand and fifteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, for a total estimated premium of two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and twenty-one-six, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item B. Authorize proper city officials to amend the contract with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, to enforce the three-point-seven-five Affordable Care Act fee assessed to the city's health insurance plan for an additional estimated cost of two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand-three-hundred-and-two dollars and ninety-five cents for, for the time period of January one, two thousand and fifteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, plan year, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
I have a comment.
Alderman Beedling?
Three-point-seventy-five percent of Affordable Care Act, this thing, it's just another fee, like the medical device tax and everything else, flawed plan. As the years go on, it's gonna cost more and more and more, and they still haven't, they delayed a lot of their mandates. And I think people in this country are in for a big shock once the delays are off, and they're gonna find out what their health insurance from their employer's gonna cost. Thank you.
Alderman, this is an unfunded mandate. So it's extra money to the city. A motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item C. Authorize proper city official to renew the Monumental Life Insurance and Express Scripts Programs for January one, two thousand and fifteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, plan year, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item D. Authorize proper city official to renew the I-MED Supplemental Vision Program for, for January one, two thousand and fifteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, plan year, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
And I will, will state, items C and D were at no cost to the City of Waukeg.
Thank you, Alderman Cunningham. There is no old business. There are no reports or communications. New business recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approval payroll dated November twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of one million, three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand-six-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents. Bonus payroll in the amount of seven thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. And final payout in the amount of eight thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye. Item B, approval of bills dated December first, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of two million-two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item C, approval of raffle sale for Waukegan Township. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moiseo. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, approval of raffle sale application for the EMCO Bowling League. Motion by Alderman Beedley, second by Alderman Rivera. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ordinances and Resolutions. Item A, ordinance, approve and ordinance levying and assessing taxes of the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, for the 2014 tax levy year. Alderman, I've done some soul searching. I've done my homework. I've had many, many conversations with our Finance Director, Tina Smigelski, and at this particular venture, I'm asking you for no tax levy increase for next year.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Velco.
Second.
Second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
I'm going to vote aye on this, but Your Honor, I ask that you kind of give us maybe some glimpse into how you might handle the shortfall that you mentioned at last council meeting. I'm voting, I agree with you, I just, I would like to kind of find out where we're, you, Tina, and the rest of your department heads are going to come up with a shortfall of 1.2 million. I mean, I think it's, for us to help you as you move forward with this, I think it's important that we kind of know where we're going to make up this shortfall. It's a legit question, I think.
I understand that, Alderman, and I will tell you that Tina and I have had many, many discussions. We had a meeting just before today's meeting. It's not going to be easy. This is going to be a very challenging year next year. As all of you well know, the grant for the, safer grant for the firemen is coming due now, and next year, the cops grant is coming due. That's going to leave us with a shortfall next year, but we have come to realization that we can do this. We're going to tighten the budgets. We're looking at innovative ways of utilizing personnel, and I think we can make this work. I'm asking all of you tonight to trust me. I have never let you down in the 18 months I've been here. I've kept my word on everything I've ever asked you to do, and I'm asking you to have faith in me as mayor of this community to pass this. I'm sure that Tina and I and the other staff members can work through this. Tina and I discussed this, and she assured me that it's going to be difficult, but we can make this work. Tina, would you like to make a comment? No?
She knows her.
Well, Your Honor, and I, I don't think this is about us having trust in you, and I think that it's your relationship with us and what you've been able to prove over the last 18 months has given me, and I can't speak for the rest of you Aldermen, but I think that we've agreed with most of your agenda, but I will say this. It'd be difficult for me to passing any budget, approving any appropriation if we're looking at cutting services. And I know we have a young lady in our Finance Department, and I have nothing but the utmost respect and confidence in every department head that works for the City of Waukegan. I want that to be very clear. But I want also to be clear and to be expected that the services that is rendered to this community, by the last cuts that we have, we cannot go through that agony again. And I don't know any other Aldermen, how they feel, but I can tell you this Alderman, who feels cuts and service cuts more severely than anybody else because in the area that I represent, fortunately, unfortunately, must receive the services that the city provides. So I would take up your challenge on trusting you. I would take up your belief in your department heads that we can get this done, but it must be done with the understanding that city services cannot be cut. My vote is aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I have serious concerns too, but I will vote aye, and I commend the mayor for being able to go forward without a tax.
Thank you, Alderman. I appreciate your trust in me. Item B, ordinances, ordinance reflect a resident parking permit on the west side of Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue from the address commonly known as 524 Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue to the address commonly known as 514 Martin Luther King Avenue. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedley. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
I vote aye with the Alderman.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I just want to remind the residents that the leaf vacuuming service is now completed, so your yard waste continues through December unless someone knows something different. Yard waste continues through December 15 in the proper receptacles, bags or cans. So if you still have leaves, get them in those bags and cans by December 15.
They for those.
Yeah, they know. My only other comment was I, the mayor had to break a tie tonight on small bottle liquor sales. I think when that, the ordinance was written, there must have been a reason why many markets weren't allowed to sell small bottles. I think tax revenue is a weak argument to help 11 or 15 businesses to sell half pints of liquor that are travel size that probably will increase our problems with panhandling, neighborhood issues. I'm going to guess the people who live in those neighborhoods aren't going to be so thrilled about our new ordinance, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Velco.
Pass.
Alderman Rivera.
Pass.
Alderman Cunningham.
There are two pressing issues for me. One of them, and Chief, I'm sorry, I should have hit you, shouldn't have said hit, but I should have brought to your attention first, but it kind of brought to my mind when we were talking about other things. I was able to share this with Alderman earlier today. There are some gas stations, and I'm going to say gas stations right now, that are selling, is it safe to say these are drug paraphernalia? One of them is smoking paraphernalia, as Alderman Moiseo would say. Right here, one is a, is it a bong? That's correct pronunciation of bong?
Bong.
Bong.
Alright. Right, this is being sold.
Water pipe.
A water pipe, Harold Beedley. This is being sold right at the checkout corner at some of our gas stations. Now, I, when I looked, when I saw it, I just couldn't believe it, so I then asked a licensed administrator to go out there and take a look. I think he's already talked to Lieutenant Fitzgerald already on that, but this is just unacceptable. If I'm not mistaken, Chief, if a person is riding with this in their car, aren't they charged with drug paraphernalia? If they have one of these in their car, and these, is this hookah, is this what it's called, hookah?
We've got a hookah lounge.
You can sell that at the, you can buy them, Your Honor. Yeah, but you can, you can buy this at the gas station? But can't you, can't you also put marijuana in this? I have no comment, but thank you for making light of it, but I, you're Chief, I took some pictures for you. If you can have some of our guys take a look at, and George, I don't know what we can do from a license standpoint. I'm just not a fan of it, particularly if a young kid or teenager goes in, want to buy this, and our high school is right around it, and there's a traveling spot for most of our kids to go through, we need to maybe talk to these owners to make sure, you know, how they're selling it, who they're selling it to, and I don't know what are the laws that prevent them from selling to underage kids. Can anybody just buy these?
I don't know. It's smoking. I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, but I really, I do believe.
Smoking paraphernalia.
I do believe there should be some type of admonition. I think it goes back to a statement earlier that Mr. Torres might need some help on the streets to make sure that happens. We don't want Aldermen start doing it. I know we don't want that, now do we, Aldermen? Second, I was asked to make some comments recently on a very, I think, is it a hot topic? I can't say if it's hot or not, but I think it's something that needs to be said and talked about. The Ferguson, Missouri situation. I thank God that in the community which, in which I live, that we don't have situations like that. I say that truthfully. I say that honestly, and I believe it in my soul that we don't have those type of situations. That does not to say that we don't have disagreements or people saying police have said this or did that. No. I don't think we have those situations that is taking place right now in the city of Ferguson, Missouri. But it is something that I think sometimes it needs to be talked about. A lot of times, particularly when it's dealing with young African-American boys and Latino boys, more specifically, some people clamp up. They don't want to talk about it. Is it right to say this about a black kid or Latino kid without someone saying they're prejudiced or they're racist or whatever? The fact of the matter is, sometimes we have to talk about these issues, because if you don't talk about them, they become suppressed. And when they become suppressed, people blow up at the wrong time. I think some of the training that happens here in our community is second to none. I'm a fan of this. I think out there in Ferguson, where this is me now. When you don't live in that community, it has a different effect of how you treat people. It's just fact, y'all. On this particular council right now, we have two police officers that I grew up with. I've known them since I was a little kid. It's a difference when you see them at your school. Joe Rakovic was at our school, Moise. That was, wasn't officer Joe, was Joe. There's a difference. Is there training that needs to be happening, I think, happening throughout our country with some of our young men? Yes. Today's young men are totally different than when I was a kid, when the mayor was a kid. It's just different. It's not to say they're bad or good, it's different. I think some of the values that they have, I don't want to say they're wrong. They could be misguided, particularly if you don't have the proper person in that home giving them the guidance that they need. I thank God today that I have my mom. I see in the audience, I have my cousin right now. His grandmother, my mother's are sisters, but if you did something, you can, you can tell the difference because you got the same type of punishment from both of them. That's the environment that I grew up under. Today, it's just different. It's unfortunate that it's different, but it's different. Now, the training that needs to go on with some of our, some officers, maybe they need to go back. I can't tell you. Only that particular department in that particular city, you can make that judgment. I thank God that I have a chief who's from this city, who understands, who knows, who can probably sit back, he can identify who needs and who doesn't. I trust that. I don't need no mandates from the state, from the federal, to tell me what needs. I think we can do it here, and I think we do a very good job of it. Are we perfect? No one's perfect. The owners also must come on our young men, our young ladies. I say this to them all the time. You're not going to win trying to fight the police on the street. It's not going to happen. You can quote me on that. It will not happen. If there's an issue, I think you should do what they say, when they say it, and how they say it. If you don't like it, then you come to the chief of police. Then you come to the mayor. You come to the Aldermen. Then we can resolve those issues with open discussion on how we can improve the process. But the mere fact that you can go on the streets and challenge officers, I don't think that is the way to handle those situations. And from a respect level, I think we should be respecting our frontline officers, our teachers, and our elderly. That's just, I don't know if that's something that needs to be a law. That should be something inside of you from a moral standpoint. We cannot expect for our officers, teachers, and our elderly to respect young men when they don't even give the same respect. I'm not telling you that every police officer who pulls you over, they're going to be, it's not going to happen. That's why we have a process in place to help that and to change that. And as long as I'm Alderman, we will. And working with the Aldermen on this court in the past, if you bring an issue where you think you've been mistreated, you can't tell me one person upon this, this panel right here will not defend that. I believe it, and I trust it. There's a two-pronged approach I think that really needs to happen. I can't say for Ferguson. I can only say for what I think is working for us. Those community service officers in the neighborhood, that's, that's a great thing. That's how Officer Motley and Officer Velco, Joe Rakovich, Lionel Farmer, Danny Grehouse, and a host of others, that's how they got known. The other, when you have chief of police that I have the privilege of working under, and you bring an issue to them, and they address the issue. It's addressed, not just put on the back shelf, not just put up here. After they gone, we talk about it. But more importantly, you have representatives from Alderman to mayor who you can bring those issues to, and they can be addressed openly, honestly. Now, you might not always like the outcome, but the mere fact of being addressed, that is a step in the right direction. I was asked to give some interviews. Unfortunately, ran the story before I could, but it's just been such a hot topic, and it was brought to me a couple of days ago. I was at an eating establishment, someone at, what do you think, Mr. Cunningham? What, and I, I gave them what I'm giving you right now. I don't know if it's the perfect thing, but I know one thing for sure, that we should be proud that we do things a little bit different, and that we're open to change, to move forward in our community. Now, what works in Waukegan might not work in North Chicago, Zion, Gurnee, et cetera, but I do believe what we have been able to do here potentially could be a blueprint, county, state, country. I'm just thankful that it's working. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Conken.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to echo the comments of Alderman May. I think our leaf pickup went very well this year, being the first time it was out of the hands of the city employees. I did actually get a complaint, though. They showed up a day early, so I had a person call me up and tell me that they had their leaves all piled up and were ready to go on Wednesday, and the leaf pickup guy showed up on Tuesday, so that's something I'm going to have to mention. I want Tom to be aware of it. We can't tell people at a ward that they're coming on Wednesday and just because they're ahead of the game, have them show up a day early. So that's something that we can work on for next year, and I'll talk to Tom about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Alderman May, talking about the, you can still put yard waste out. She beat me to the punch because she went before me, but I was going to mention that. So thank you, Alderman May. Residents need to know that about the tax levy. The mayor says he can get it done. I have confidence in that. I also have confidence in the mayor because I have confidence in our Finance Chairman, Tina. We've had bigger deficits than this, and we found a way to make it up and not suffer with services. So I have confidence in the mayor and also in her that they'll make it work. The fact that we're not going to levy any higher taxes, so that's a good thing. Just to echo real quick about what Alderman Cunningham said. It's a hot button issue about Ferguson, Missouri, and I think it comes down to two things. It comes down to trust and relationships. The more people you have in positions of, I guess, authority, and the community trusts those people, I think things just go a little bit smoother. And people build trust and relationships when they've been with people for a long time. And when you've grown up here, as most of us have, all of us have, it helps that when you can get into a volatile situation, could be just like that officer on the street, or in a school, or wherever, that when that person of authority is speaking to someone, they know that they're, they're being truthful with them and that they care about them. I think that goes a long way. I think that's maybe how I would put it. Alderman Cunningham talked about it. So that's how I would put it. I think it comes down to trust and relationships. Thank you.
Alderman Beedley.
Let's take another whack at the teachers. And not all teachers, the ones who are on the picket lines. You go by Glenn Florin Lewis, their stupid blue ribbons are tied on our traffic signal poles. Glenn Rockin Jackson, North Avenue and Franklin. You know, I don't understand people that, it's no different than graffiti. You know, they wanted to put the stuff up there. Can't they get their lazy butt out there after school tomorrow? Take your ribbons down, please. It looks like crap. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
One second. If it would make you happier, give me the list of the places, and I'll go do it this weekend.
Drive along by every school.
Alright, if it's going to make you happy, I'll take care of it myself as a lazy-ass teacher. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Moise, I'd be glad to help you.
Thank you.
A former student of mine.
I'll pick you up Saturday morning, Coach.
You really learn well.
Alright.
I guess, leaf, leaf collection, the weather's held up pretty good. I remember snow in Thanksgiving and piles of leaves, but still, we do have piles of leaves. I guess, I'm not a fan of bagging them and paying yourself. Different kind. We used to be able to burn them. We can't do that anymore, environmentally. I guess you could dig them in your garden like I used to, but you get older, you don't want to dig your garden that much. I just, somehow, how are we going to enforce when people got them raked up on their parkway and sitting there? We're going to have code go and say, hey, you got to get them bagged and get them up? Because I got some areas in my ward that are just sitting there. What do I do? We're going to make two laps through, and sometimes we made a lap through, cars were parked there. I don't know if we're going to put signs up, no parking this side of the street, leaf collection. I don't know how we're going to handle, but that's a problem too at times. Working together to get them picked up and trying to stay on the schedule they got so people know if we can do that. And I also thought maybe with our phone, our phone service, we could call different areas and say, hey, your leaves will be picked up tomorrow or on such and such a dates. Be ready. Please don't park your car in front of them today. That may help. Some thoughts as we learn as we go along. But otherwise, Mayor, I commend you for keeping the levy the same.
Thank you.
I commend you. I'll do all I can to help you do that, too. I was one to go the extra mile, but if you can do it, my gosh, I guess, I guess you've been saying your prayers, so thank you.
Corporate Council, proceed, please.
Just want to clarify the record. When I said, when Alderman May raised that 3.75, I want to thank you for raising that, and I said that the agenda was a typo. Well, I am actually looking at the ordinance that came out of my office, and I'm the one that made the error. It was 3.25 with my ordinance, not 3.75, and I would not want anybody in the world to think it was attributable to our clerk, because he does a fabulous job. I'll take responsibility, and that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Motion adjourned by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman May. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me adjourned. Thank you. Me adjourned. Thank you.